It still gives us chills. The Covenant School shooting ended six lives and set off a heated debate in Tennessee. Now, on blazing hot August afternoon, a special session on public safety, months in the making, begins.
I hereby declare the House Representatives of the 113th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee now in extraordinary session.
The winds of change have made it to Capitol Hill. But are they strong enough to sway lawmakers?
I think the votes aren't there.
This is a special edition of News Channel 5 at 6.
Twenty-one weeks ago today, our hearts were broken by the horrific shooting at Nashville's Covenant School. For 21 weeks, we have grieved the lives lost, and for 21 weeks, we have searched for solutions to try to make sure it never happens again. With that hope, Tennessee lawmakers returned to the state Capitol this afternoon for a special session on public safety. They were summoned here by Tennessee Governor Bill Lee over the objections of some in his own party. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Carrie Sharp. The question that will be answered this week, will any change happen that will make our families and our kids safer? This session started just two hours ago with some strong emotions on the House floor.
With gun violence that is impacting this state, that has killed countless people and schoolchildren, and instead, we're starting off amending the rules of this body to limit our democracy? It's ridiculous. This is absurd.
Emotions are high as this special session gets underway, and to keep the peace, a large contingent of state troopers will be positioned inside and outside the Capitol. Our crew saw dozens of troopers loading onto a bus near First Horizon Park this morning before heading to the State House. Throughout this hour, our team of experienced journalists will be taking a really hard look at the issues that will be talked about here during this session, and we'll be doing that from all sides. Right now, I'm joined by our chief investigative reporter Phil Williams, who has really led our search for answers since the Covenant School shooting. Phil, what are you expecting to happen?
Well, the one thing we know for sure is that nothing directly involving guns will pass this session. That's because lawmakers are limited by the proclamation issued by Governor Lee in calling for this special session. Now, the result, according to advocates, is they are not viewing this as their Superbowl, to use one person's words. They're viewing this as the preseason. In other words, Carrie, they say this is the beginning of the conversation, not the end.
You're going to be with us through the next hour as we really walk through the different issues that they will be tackling. For the past 21 weeks, as Phil mentioned, much of that conversation happening behind closed doors, but today, it goes public. At News Channel 5's Chris Davis was inside the Capitol this afternoon as the House gavelled into session. Chris, what are lawmakers really expecting to accomplish here?
Well, Carrie, as you heard Phil mention, they will not be talking about guns or gun control, but there are topics that they will be talking about over the next week. Mental health capacity across the state, safe storage of firearms, although we should note, they do not punish any gun owners that do not store firearms safely. And then they're also focusing in on making it a felony to threaten schools, threaten churches, instances like the Covenant shooting. Those are some of the things they can pass this week. But the first thing they had to do today is set the rules for the special session. You would think that'd be pretty mundane, but not with this Tennessee state legislature. It sparked a two-hour debate between Republicans and Democrats over really one specific part of the rule suggestion, making very stiff penalties for individuals that disrupt the chamber. Obviously, a response to Representatives Justin Jones and Justin Pearson's protest on the Capitol floor back in April and March. So essentially, it came down to this. Under the rule packet that was passed by lawmakers, it would be if you disrupt the chamber once, you are not allowed to speak on the chamber for more than three days. If you do it twice, that is six days, and if you do it a third time, you would not be able to speak for the entirety of this special session. Earlier, you heard from Representative Powell on this, had a lot of fiery opinions. We also wanted to share Representative Gino Bolso's opinion on why he supported this rule change. Let's listen.
There's been a suggestion here this afternoon that these rules are somehow un-American or anti-democratic. Nothing could be further from the truth.
Of course, Republicans arguing that they need that order within the chamber in order to get the work done that lawmakers were sent here by the governor to do. We are officially gavelled in. The House is done for the night, the Senate is as well. Tomorrow, they'll focus in on the committees that will form the final language of many of these pieces of legislation. More than 100 filed just on the House side, so they've got a lot of work to do, and they're going to try to cram it all in within a very short amount of time. Carrie?
Chris, thank you for all of that. Now, the scene here at the state Capitol is far different than what we saw in the days immediately following the school shooting, and that is intentional.
How many more? Six are dead! How many more? Six are dead!
You'll remember how hundreds of young people and their families packed the Capitol to demand change. This time, state troopers are limiting the number of people allowed inside so that lawmakers can come and go more easily. This morning, we did see a small contingent of Proud Boys making their presence known. Authorities say the group was peaceful and later just went on their way. Late this afternoon, three protesters showed up outside the Capitol from the group 10free.org out of Spring Hill. They told our Levi Ismail, their mission is to protect children and their rights. Now, the potential presence of groups like the Proud Boys is a reason why some of the groups who are calling for new laws decided to be, have more of a low profile, very intentional on their part. They wanted to avoid any emotional outburst. Levi Ismail has been at the Capitol all day long, covering the different groups who showed up today to have their voices heard. Levi?
People walk right by us here, leaving the Capitol steps, but I want to draw your attention to the Capitol steps right over here, right by the street, because they, these people who were part of the protests are now walking right past three heavily armed men. The men that you just mentioned, the folks from 10free, these folks are from Spring Hill. I had a chance to speak with them, and just like you said, they say that they want to make sure that their voices are heard and that they too want to protect children, but do so without anyone infringing on their rights. And you know, we only saw just about a handful of people who were here advocating on behalf of gun rights. There were mostly people here advocating on behalf of gun reform, and that's what we saw for the most of the day. This was the scene just down the street earlier today as Representative Justin Pearson led the way for protesters demanding action on gun violence. We heard from people representing several different groups, but we also saw parents who simply wanted lawmakers to hear how gun violence impacted their lives. They know there's only so much time this special session to get anything done, but we met with parents who felt that this is what we need to do to make sure that people understand the urgency of the situation. We also heard from the few gun rights advocates around who said they would rather see lawmakers work to improve on other bills than focus their attention on something they can't really control.
Everybody had the right to bear arms. The amendment told us that. Constitutional amendment told us that. But what we're trying to do is to make sure we keep them out of hands with people that shouldn't have them.
You take away somebody's guns, you probably won't get them all. A lot of people have a lot of guns. If you come to my house, take away my guns, I guarantee you won't get them all. I've got guns all over the place. So you're not going to get them all. It's not going to work. And I can go and get a gun very easily in many, many places. So we've got 400 million guns in this country. You can't keep them out of the wrong hands, but what you can do is prosecute the actual criminals.
Now, so far, this has been a peaceful protest, and the people that I've talked to have all said that they want to keep it that way for the remainder of this special session. Now, the folks that I talked to earlier up there who are armed, I asked them if, you know, there actually, if there are actual bullets in those firearms, and they said that they don't feel comfortable answering that question at this point. You know, just like I said, there are people here who are trying to make sure they keep the peace, and you know, around here, we see a lot of Tennessee Highway Patrolmen, and you know, at this point, it seems like all of that has been working to try and keep tensions at a minimum, and you know, it's going to be a long week, so we'll see how long that lasts. For now, reporting, Levi Ismail, News Channel 5.
Levi, thank you for the update. Among those watching this special session from a distance are the Covenant families. We recently heard from Katie Dickhouse, the mother of nine-year-old Evelyn, who was murdered at the Covenant School. Katie Dickhouse spoke out in a public service announcement for the group Voices for Safer Tennessee.
On March 27th, 2023, our lives were forever changed by simply dropping our girls off at school. A place where Evelyn loved to learn strengthened her faith and where her life was taken by a troubled person who easily accessed multiple firearms, turning our whole world and family upside down. Beginning August 21st, Tennessee lawmakers will decide whether to pass responsible firearm safety laws that will work towards protecting our children and their right to life. What's more important?
Evelyn would have turned 10 this month, a birthday that she never got to celebrate. News Channel 5's Hannah McDonald has stayed close to those of the Covenant School who have been impacted by this tragedy, and she talked to them about their hopes for this special session.
I got the sense they want the focus to be on making kids, schools, really all Tennessee and safer, and not putting a target on anyone's back. Under the hot sun, the Sullivans find themselves at the Tennessee Capitol once again.
It's kind of the worst hobby in the world, right?
It's the worst unpaid job you could have.
Yeah.
Siblings Jack and Maggie Sullivan are gearing up to spend more time here this week, advocating for gun safety with others personally impacted by the shooting at the Covenant School. Their dad works at Covenant. He's the calm man in the police body camera video who helped officers get inside the day of the shooting.
Our dad having experienced the shooting and, you know, us having pretty strong convictions about the kinds of things that need to be done to take action and prevent further tragedies, we thought it was really important to come and to support.
Dozens affected by the shooting are closely watching the special session.
She knew how to celebrate people.
Anna Cottle was close friends with head of school and victim Catherine Coontz.
I don't think the families can move on, because I think a lot of the families who were there were there because Catherine had invested in their children and had educated them on how to better advocate for their children and how to better support their children's emerging voice and choice.
Covenant families worked hard to get this special session on public safety. Now they're begging lawmakers to step up to the plate.
And prioritizing this over reelection means a lot. I know that's something in particular that the Covenant community who have met with individual legislators, that's something that they've run up against.
The people, forever changed by March 27th, say it'd be a shame if lawmakers ignore the needs of the people who asked them to be here.
And that's where we need to be putting our energy, especially if we have a surplus budget as a state to steward that well. What could be better than investing in children's lives?
In Nashville, Hannah McDonald, News Channel 5.
Coming up, when this special edition of News Channel 5 at 6 continues, what do Republicans and Democrats want to get out of this session, and why has change been so hard? Phil Williams looks at Tennessee's never-ending debate about guns. Debate began in earnest tomorrow morning when the bills will begin, begin to be heard in several legislative committees. Of course, this conversation began 21 weeks ago when the Covenant School shooting happened, and we lost six of our neighbors who were memorialized in a citywide vigil back in March.
Let us never forget their names. Evelyn Dykes, Haley Scruggs, William Kenny, Cynthia Peake, Catherine Coontz, and Mike
Following the shooting, lawmakers passed a bipartisan bill to beef up school security, including putting a school resource officer in every school. As to what else needs to be done, the two parties are deeply divided. Among the bills filed by Republicans, they would make it a felony for a person to threaten to commit an act of mass violence, and a judge would be able to hold that individual for evaluation to see if that person is actually a threat. They want to require mental health professionals to report a patient who they believe could be a risk, at risk of committing such an act. They would provide state funding for inpatient psychiatric treatment for individuals who don't have health insurance. And perhaps the most controversial, they have a bill to transfer any juvenile aged 16 and older to adult court for any crime involving a gun. Now, on the other side of the aisle, Democrats say they are, quote, defiant in what they are speaking, despite being limited by the governor's proclamation about what can be talked about during this special session. For the past two weeks, a Democratic bus tour has traveled across the state calling for tougher gun laws. The bus tour ended its journey at the Capitol earlier today. Despite Governor Lee's proclamation, Democrats are pushing legislation to require universal background checks for anyone who buys a gun. They want a red flag law, also known as an extreme risk protection order, to take guns away from mentally unstable individuals. They would reinstate the law that requires people to have permits to carry a gun in public, and they want to repeal the law that allows people to leave guns in their cars. News Channel 5 Chief Investigative Reporter Phil Williams knows these issues well, and Phil, if it seems like we've been here before, it's because we have been.
Absolutely. You know, it's sometimes said that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. As we discovered, that's pretty much the definition of what we've seen with Tennessee's debate about guns and gun violence.
House Bill 1588 by Leader--
House Bill 1161 by Representative Stewart.
Senate Bill 1021. Senator Campbell, you're recognized.
Here on Tennessee's Capitol Hill--
This is not a novel piece of legislation.
The debates can sometimes seem far removed from the real world in which most Tennesseans live. That is, until something like this happens. The mass shooting at Nashville's Covenant School followed years of debate over gun policy in the Tennessee legislature, debate that more often than not ended with nothing changing. Among those rushing to the place where parents hoped to be reunited with their children was the area state senator.
I spent hours that seemed like days. I mean, it was a long day.
There, Heidi Campbell says she came face to face with families for whom she has fought.
And at one point in the congregation, I heard this primal scream come from this woman who had just found out that she'd lost her child, and I will never forget it. It was anguish. It was just horrible. Just nobody should ever have to go through that.
After the Parkland School shooting, then-Governor Bill Haslam talked about the need to beef up school security.
But everything from school resource officers to physical improvements in the schools to video monitors.
And after Uvalde, Governor Bill Lee again wanted to talk school security.
We are not looking at gun restrictions or gun laws as a part of this school safety plan going forward.
Even after Covenant, Lieutenant Governor Randy McNally's first statement was about, you guessed it, school security.
Do we have a school security problem?
No, I don't think that's the solution. We can't militarize our schools, and even if we could, we can't militarize them enough.
We also don't have a motive at this time.
In this case, police say the shooter was being treated for some sort of mental illness, but the shooter's family was powerless to do anything. It was a similar story for the shooter in Nashville's Antioch church shooting in 2017 and the Wolf House mass shooting in 2018.
We've been really working on this for a very long time.
Over and over, Democrats have pushed for a so-called red flag law that would allow the courts to take weapons out of the hands of such mentally unstable individuals.
This isn't about gun rights. It's about living rights.
Over and over, Tennessee's Republican majority refused to go along, with one member arguing that taking such a person's guns away might actually send them over the edge.
I'm afraid this will cause more escalated violence than less.
House Democratic Leader Karen Kemper--
They just don't believe it solves the problem. I mean, that's literally what some of them say. Guns, you know, don't kill people. It's people that kill people. It's just been that kind of conversation.
Over and over--
Those opposed no?
No.
The noes have it.
The result was the same.
They're not just doing nothing about this problem. They're every day working hard to make it worse, to make guns more prevalent.
Former state representative Mike Stewart repeatedly tried to pass a law requiring universal background checks to keep firearms out of the hands of convicted felons, people accused of domestic violence, and the mentally ill.
I can equip myself to attack a school using Arms List and other sites on the internet and with no background check, no restrictions of any kind, no restriction other than having cash in my pocket, I can get everything I need to attack that school.
Year after year--
Oppose, say no. No. Bill Felsen.
More of the same.
I hate to be a pessimist.
But--
It's a really, really tough issue.
And just this year--
This bill's about illegal gun transfer. It's a very simple bill.
Heidi Campbell tried to pass a bill making it a misdemeanor to transfer a gun to a person knowing that person was legally prohibited from possessing a gun.
And obviously, that's pretty simple logic, but nonetheless, it didn't get any debate in committee.
With no debate--
Madam Kirk, take the vote.
Campbell got one Republican vote. The rest--
Chairman, you have three ayes and five noes.
Voted her bill down.
We just had on the floor a bill that we passed to make it illegal to give a car to someone who's intoxicated, and yet we are not going to do the same when it comes to firearms.
What does that say about the state of our politics?
You know, I mean, in the final analysis, it says that we're not willing to protect our children.
After Covenant, some Republicans, like Lieutenant Governor McNally, hinted they might now be willing to support a red flag law.
There's nothing that you could support, though, to restrict access to guns?
Not constitutionally.
Gun lobbyist John Harris argues that last year's Supreme Court decision, known as Bruin, means the Second Amendment is a near absolute prohibition of what some might view as common sense solutions.
If Republicans support a red flag law, will there be consequences at the ballot box from your group?
Oh, absolutely, and probably in the courts as well.
And you'll try to defeat any Republicans who go along with this?
We will look for challengers for anyone that violates Bruin.
Which advocates say means this community can only pray that these deaths in this city will convince lawmakers that doing the same thing over and over again isn't making us safer.
You know, there have been 367 shootings since Columbine, when we said never again. If this is the one time when we're going to make progress, then thank God.
And Carrie, a big part of the story this week is going to be those conflicting visions of how we respond to Covenant and make sure it doesn't happen again.
A lot of different visions, but hopefully it doesn't lead to inaction. That would be the real tragedy.
Exactly.
When we return, Phil talks and looks at the death of a local musician and why the solutions his family sought to prevent other deaths have proven to be so elusive.
Those lobbyists, if this would have been their family instead of mine, their attitude would change very quickly.
One of the topics that will be debated during this special session on gun violence is safe storage, that legislation to require guns to be locked up when not in use. I want to bring back in Phil here. This is an issue that you have been looking at for a very long time, and guns being taken from unlocked cars here in Nashville is a big problem, also a big problem in other big cities.
That's right, and it has left victims all across the state of Tennessee. One of those cases was in 2019 involving a young Nashville musician whose life was cut short way too soon.
Kyle was very friendly, very kind, very outgoing. Everybody loved him.
Kyle Yorlitz had big dreams.
He was a natural, you know, this performance was going to be a thing for him.
But those dreams were shattered by a bullet from a stolen gun. A Metro Police chaplain called Kyle's parents up in Pennsylvania with the news.
She said, "Are you by yourself?" And I knew then it was bad. And I begged her to tell me, and she wouldn't. She said, "Go find someone."
It was dark out, and she had a flashlight. I seen she was like staggering around or whatever, coming across the yard. And I remember thinking to myself, if she doesn't watch what she's doing, I'm going to end up running into her, just pulling up the driveway, and then--
I could barely walk or breathe.
Of course, your initial reaction is, you know, are you sure it was him? Did you check his wallet to make sure the ID was right? And you know, that's the stuff I was asking.
You know, we couldn't believe it.
Police charged five teens, ages 12 to 16, with the murder.
It's a 9-millimeter handgun.
They also seized two 9-millimeter handguns. One of them, our investigation discovered, stolen from a car outside these upscale Brentwood area apartments. The car's owner told police he left it unlocked. The other gun stolen with the car outside this North Nashville market. The driver left the engine running while she ran inside.
How does she live with herself, knowing what happened with that gun? I couldn't.
It's a Smith &amp; Wesson 40. It's stolen out of Georgia.
Newly updated numbers from Metro Police show the number of guns stolen from cars has skyrocketed from 576 in 2017 to more than 1,300 last year. This whole problem stems from a 2014 law pushed by the gun lobby to allow guns in cars. The law required that those firearms had to be locked up and out of sight, but there was no penalty for those who chose to ignore that law.
Even though it's a fine only, if you, you know, I'm a lawyer, if I got a misdemeanor on my record, I'm going to have to go talk to the Tennessee Supreme Court in the bar.
Year after year, Republican lawmakers have refused to do anything about it.
It's kind of mind-numbing to me.
Nashville Democrat Caleb Hemmer was determined to try again this session.
And our bill would be a classy misdemeanor punishable by a court-ordered firearm safety class.
It's not a fine or jail sentence.
Yeah, and we did that on purpose. We know it's a conservative state, got a hard enough time passing common sense gun legislation here.
Do you want to make the victim a second victim?
Back in 2020, gun lobbyist John Harris argued that such a law would unfairly penalize gun owners whose weapons are stolen.
And some people will hear you say that and say, that's pretty callous.
Well, it may be, but it's the world we live in. I mean, you know, Tennesseans love their guns.
Now, Kyle's family responded, well, Tennesseans should also love their children. Now, while Democrats favor a mild punishment such as a fine or a requirement for a gun safety class, their Republican colleagues argue that they really just want incentives to encourage gun owners to do the right thing. Carrie, again, a good example of those competing visions.
And a good example of the debate, fiery debate we will likely hear over the next few days.
Absolutely.
As our coverage of this opening day of the special session continues here at 6, Republicans say the real problem is not guns. It is mental health, but is our system equipped to deal with those issues? We'll take an in-depth look coming up. One person we haven't mentioned yet is the shooter responsible for the Covenant School tragedy. Police say that shooter had mental health issues, although we still don't know all the details there. Some, including the governor, have argued that the lesson of Covenant is that the state needs some sort of red flag law, also known as an extreme risk protection order, to be able to take guns out of the hands of mentally unstable people. But Republican leaders in the House say they are not interested in discussing that idea at all. News Channel 5 Chief Investigative Reporter Phil Williams is back with us again. If you listen to Republicans, they are saying we need to count on the mental health system to fix this problem.
That's right, and no one disagrees with the notion that mental health is part of this conversation, but as my colleague Ben Hall discovered, the mental health system itself is broken, failing Tennesseans time after time.
I know he did not do it intentionally.
Elizabeth Frinsley will never forget consoling her son after he learned he killed his father.
They were best friends, and he just couldn't believe it. I mean, he was just in shock. He cried. It was like for months.
Investigators say a son lit his home on fire with his father inside and watched it burn.
Nearly two years ago, we reported on this fire in the Brentwood home where 26-year-old John Hassy lived with his dad, James. Investigators say John started the fire in his room, and it quickly spread throughout the house.
There was a guy standing there in shorts.
But neighbors say John easily got outside. They took the-- They took these pictures of him, standing there, staring at the fire he started.
It was strange. They said, "Can, is anybody inside?" And they said, "Yeah, there's somebody in there." But they weren't trying to get him out, you know what I'm saying?
John did not try to save his father because he did not believe any of it was real.
He thought he was playing a part in a movie. He was talking to cast members and they were talking to him and verbal or auditory hallucinations. I mean, he was severe psychosis.
John was charged with murder, but a judge found him not guilty by reason of insanity, which his family supported.
Because I know it went on. I think all I can do is support him, be understanding.
He's now in a mental hospital, getting treatment for a variety of mental health issues, including bipolar disorder. Its help his family tried to get him for years.
It could have been stopped had the mental health system done what it should have done and intercepted this when the signs were there.
Attorney David Rabin represented John and saw how he'd been in and out of mental health facilities.
His mother begged them, "Please don't release him. He's not ready to go." Well, ma'am, he needs to be released. He doesn't meet the commitment standard any longer. Take him home.
911.
My brother has a mental illness, and he's just going, he's going crazy right now.
A year before the fire, John's brother and dad called 911, desperate for help.
He's bipolar. He has a mental illness. And he just got out of the mental hospital.
John was racing his Jeep around the same home he later burned.
He was delusional. He was thinking he was a race car driver. He was, in other words, in severe psychosis. And that was after he was released from the hospital.
His car finally crashed and caught on fire. No one was hurt, but John was sent back to a mental hospital.
How could you not see that this was a sign that something even worse was going to happen?
But just like every other time, he was quickly released.
Treatment is hard to get. It's just, I think, understaffed.
John's family had money for treatment, and his mom is an ICU nurse. But even with all of that, John never got the help he needed.
We're seeing a lot more cases than I saw when I started.
Davidson County Judge Melissa Blackburn was elected nine years ago and says mental health cases have soared.
It's definitely a crisis. There's no question about that.
Since 2019, more than 23,000 people in Davidson County have been ordered by a judge into a psychiatric hospital against their will. It usually starts in an emergency room, where people go when they're suicidal or in a mental health crisis. They then go to an available psychiatric hospital. A judge later decides how long they stay.
And then we make a determination based on what they say and what the doctor says as to what we feel is best for that patient's safety.
But judges started noticing they were seeing many of the same people over and over. Judge Blackburn's office put together this spreadsheet showing the county's repeat involuntary hospitalizations.
This system is broken. We've got to fix it.
The data showed, over a recent four-year period, numerous people committed 20 times or more. It also showed they often went to different psychiatric hospitals each time. And those hospitals were not communicating about the patient's history.
No one's checking. No one's paying any attention. No one's bothering to see where they've been or what they've been on or what the prior medication is. Hence, them going from hospital to hospital to hospital.
Take Natalie, not her real name. She was hospitalized 39 different times and went to five different psychiatric hospitals.
If they would communicate, they could hopefully cut down dramatically on the number of times Natalie is being hospitalized.
39-year-old Patricia was hospitalized 26 different times. She's even been to jail four times. Blackburn says each hospital sent her home after just getting her out of immediate crisis.
She's home for a week, week and a half, and something happens again. She's readmitted through an emergency room at a different hospital, and we start over.
And 33-year-old Kane jailed seven times, but was committed 28 different times at four different hospitals.
In the hospital, out of the hospital. Those statistics don't surprise me at all that you have this revolving door.
Now, they just want to get them in and get them out.
That's why Elizabeth is speaking out. Her son John never got the help he needed, and she worries about the other people the system is failing.
There's probably a lot of Johns out there.
Now, obviously, Carrie, these are complicated issues. But the question for this special session is if lawmakers do not want to pass a red flag law to take guns out of the hands of mentally unstable individuals, are they willing to do what it takes to fix this broken mental health system?
And who are they listening to to get wisdom on this topic? That's what I want to know. When we come back, we are going to stay on this conversation. If lawmakers want to make it easier to hospitalized people who are potentially a danger to themselves or others, the question is, where do you put them? One of the questions lawmakers will be wrestling with during this special session on public safety is what to do with people who may be a threat to themselves or others, especially if you don't want to take away their guns. Investigative reporter Ben Hall discovered right now there is often no place for these people to go to get help.
But I don't want anybody else to suffer this way. It's awful.
Helen Moore was traumatized by what happened after she went to the emergency room with a mental health crisis.
I just wanted to help, and I just felt like I was being thrown away.
Her therapist sent her to Unity Medical Center in Manchester, where she was admitted for suicidal ideation in July of 2020.
I was feeling suicidal. And when they asked, "How do you plan to do it?" Well, I hadn't really thought about how I'm going to do it. I'm just feeling this way.
Doctors said she needed to go to a psychiatric hospital. They just had to find one that would take her.
Did they give you an idea of how long you would wait?
No. That information, they didn't know just whenever a bed came available.
Medical records show it took four full days. That entire time, she spent locked in a small room in the ER with no window or TV. Doctors said she couldn't leave because she might hurt herself.
This is a holding cell.
And it locked?
I referred to it as the torture room.
Because Helen was uninsured, nurses told her she would have to wait for a spot to open up at the nearest state-run psychiatric hospital, Moccasen Bend, where she was 35th on the waiting list.
I remember crying the whole time over there. For an hour. What little bit I slept the only time I didn't cry.
It is heartbreaking because you don't have a way to help these people.
Unity Hospital's medical director, Emergency Room Dr. Nigel Fontaine, said Helen's wait was not unusual.
A week is actually not uncommon. I've had people down there for more than two weeks before.
The day we were there, a nurse sat in front of the same room where Helen was, watching a suicidal patient who had been there seven days.
Emergency rooms become the dumping ground for those patients, and we are required by law to take care of anyone who comes into our emergency room.
Unity Hospital's CEO said the problem is worse for people with no insurance. They have to wait for an opening at a state hospital like Moccasen Bend.
Very seldom did I see anyone.
What happened to Helen is called emergency department boarding. The problem is so serious, the state has a website and even hired this doctor to reduce the time that psychiatric patients spend in emergency departments. But data provided by the state shows wait times are increasing. In 2020, patients averaged nearly 24 hours waiting to get into a state psychiatric hospital. This year, the average is more than 39 hours. That's close to two days.
When you're in a mental health crisis, you need help then, the same as having a heart attack or a stroke.
Four days after she arrived, Helen was finally transferred to Moccasen Bend, but she was not admitted. The doctor determined she was no longer suicidal.
You see a lot of repetition of patients.
Dr. Fontaine says when patients are just sent home with no help, they often end up back in the emergency room.
This is an area that is extremely lacking in attention in this country, and people are suffering.
That's Ben Hall reporting tonight. When we come back, why is it that some popular solutions have no chance when your lawmakers go to vote during this special session? A veteran Republican tells Phil Williams, "You can trace it back to how those lawmakers are elected." And we will not rest until we live in a safer Tennessee. Phil, there are a lot of ideas that Tennesseans have that seem popular that don't really have a chance of passing here at the Capitol.
Yeah, that's one of the ironies of this special session. Ideas that are popular with voters but not popular with lawmakers. And that's because, as one veteran Republican told me, elected officials and Tennessee lawmakers are able to essentially rig their own elections so that they don't actually have to listen to the other side as much.
On the general rule, no, all across the country, these districts don't represent the makeup of the constituency of the people. And Tennessee is another example of it.
Zach Wamp is a staunch Republican who served eight terms in Congress. He even ran for governor. These days, Wamp chairs issue one, a group that champions reforms to fix our broken political system.
It is a way to rig the election.
But when Wamp looks at the Tennessee General Assembly, he sees members of his own party who have been able to solidify their grip on power by drawing district lines to maximize their chances of winning, a process known as gerrymandering.
The easiest way to win an election is if you have the pin in your hand and you get to draw the lines that you're running in, basically to choose your own voters. If you can do that, that's the easiest way to win.
You know, a lot of people think of Tennessee as a solid red Republican state. But if you look at the last three presidential elections, Republicans tend to get about 60% of the vote. Democrats still get 40%. But here in the Tennessee House of Representatives, it's a different story. Here, Republicans have drawn the line, so they have 76% of the seats, giving them the power to shut off all debate. And in the state senate, it's even worse. Here, Republicans control 82% of the seats.
You know, the truth is not partisan. The truth transcends. And the truth is, gerrymandering is not right. It's actually now gotten goofy.
Which brings us back to the gun protests. According to the Vanderbilt poll, Tennesseans overwhelmingly favor universal background checks for anyone who buys a gun, regardless of whether it's from a gun store or a private individual. They also support red flag laws to take firearms out of the hands of mentally unstable people and safe storage laws to keep guns out of the hands of children and criminals. But Tennessee's Republican supermajority, most who don't have to worry about winning general elections, have refused to consider any of those solutions.
All you have to worry about is winning the primary. You don't even have to worry about a general election challenge. What does that do? That means you can hide in the bosom of your party, raise money for the party, cheerlead for the party, suck up to the party leadership, and you get to stay in office.
Some of your Republican friends say, "Well, that's the way the game is played."
Yes, it's easy to say that. But honestly, if you're honest about it, no, that's just because it's convenient to say that. It's really not best for the people.
We will be right back to wrap up this special edition of News Channel 5 at 6 with a look at what's next for this special session on public safety. Lawmakers have gone home for the night, so Phil, what are you expecting tomorrow?
We'll see the first bills being heard in committee. That'll give us a good idea of how this session is going to go.
And we will have a team of reporters here at the Capitol covering it until this session adjourns. From Phil Williams, I'm Carrie Sharp. Thank you for watching.